Twenty-six, twenty-twenty. And we're able to do this remotely because of Executive Order two zero two point one. And we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance led by Administrator Kindred.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, free, and just.
Thank you. Judy, would you do the roll call, please?
Sure. Mayor Rogers?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Piazza?
Here.
Trustee Yates?
Here.
Trustee Eto'o?
Here.
Trustee Murphy?
Here.
Attorney Greco?
I think he stepped away for a second.
Chip, all right, we'll come back to him. DPW General Crew Chief Villanen?
Present.
Deputy Treasurer Pascoe?
Here.
Director of Community Development De Priest?
Here.
Attorney Greco?
He's here somewhere.
That's the way.
He's... Yeah, he's on.
He probably stepped away.
We'll say all are present.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So we have no proclamations this evening. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on May eleventh, twenty-twenty.
I'd like to make a minor change to what was put in mine.
Sure.
It comes under Mayor Rogers' portion of her reports. And where it states that, I forget the language, but basically to clarify that, I just wanted to make sure that for the public and for the record, that we will have farmers at the farmer's market that will also have items that are deemed not essential. But the only reason they're there is they do have items that are essential. And that we are allowing them to bring the non-essential items that they also may sell.
So Judy, you'll record that change?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So then with that change, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from May eleventh, twenty-twenty.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we're getting into our public hearings, which we have two of this evening. So I will make a motion to open up the first public hearing, which is for the continuation of the March ninth, twenty-twenty, public hearing on the comprehensive revisions to Chapter forty-seven of the village code historic preservation. So if you have a comment you may regarding that topic, we ask that you state your name and address. And Keaton will let you cue you to speak on it.
Right now, we have Nick Roth, who's raised his hand. You may go, you may speak.
Thank you, Keaton. Nick Roth, one-three-five Oak Grove. As you saw from some of the comments I was typing, I joined that conversation in progress. I was expecting the board meeting to start at seven-thirty. It's absolutely necessary that you notice the, notify all these people. In addition to seeing several houses on my street tagged. Unfortunately, on my tablet here, the map is very small. Keaton, is that map going to be available on the website for the residents of the village?
It already is.
It currently is.
Because I'm going to notify a lot of people on Oak Grove this evening whose addresses, I'm thinking, are identified. I know of three homes on Oak Grove that may go on the market sometime later this year. And I think it's, it would be a tragedy, a travesty. If these people did not know in advance that somebody from HPC may come knocking on their doors. I get it that this is in the case of demolition only. As most of you, I believe, are aware, it was not that long ago. Four or five years ago, somebody paid three hundred thousand dollars for a house on Oak Grove, and they tore it down and built a new home. A big number to pay, but there's people willing to do that. So these tagged property owners, as well as those in the proposed historic district, this is the first that I've seen, is that the section of Oak Grove where I reside is on, is considered possibly to be a historic district. We know, we need to know this information. It's not a chance that you may be notified by HPC. If you're going to plan any changes to your house or the demolition, you will be. And people need to know this in advance. Thank you.
Also, Nick, just wanted to let you know, I sent everybody the link that you can find that map. And it's downloadable and printable, so.
Thank you, Keaton. Thanks.
Look.
And just to be clear, not that this is really sort of off-topic of the Chapter forty-seven, but that map represents what was written in nineteen ninety-seven in a graphic form. That's all. It does not, it's not a, it's, it's two-hundred-and-some-odd pages of report condensed into a single map for the purposes of clean illustration. That information has always been available to the general public. But as I personally am frustrated when people tell me, well, it's been on the website, you know, if you're not looking for it, you're not going to find it. So if you don't even know to look for it, you're not going to go looking for it. So the map at least is, you know, it's done its job tonight in that you saw what somebody valued, you know, identified as valuable twenty-five years ago in a graphic form.
And just to help Matt's point, the reconnaissance survey is available just by scrolling down from that HPC page. If you scroll down, there are a bunch of resources, including the reconnaissance level survey. So, sorry to interrupt, Matt, just wanted to make sure everyone's.
I'm done. Thank you, Keaton.
So too, to that point,
Thank you, Nick.
I think, I think that map is a great asset, Matt. And I think Chuck Akers might have put that together with HPC.
Chuck did the hand-drawn version, and I digitized it, yes.
Okay, well, I have to thank you guys for doing that because I will tell you, I have a copy of that report, reconnaissance level survey here. And it's very, it's several hundred pages long. And it's pretty dry unless you're, you know, into those types of reports. But, so I think the map is a great asset. And, you know, hopefully, it's, you know, doing what it's supposed to do. Snapshot, too.
Thanks, Matt.
So, returning to the topic at hand, then, the revisions to our historic Chapter forty-seven is really what the public hearing is for.
Right. Okay. Is there anyone else, Keaton, who's looking to comment?
No one else, Alter?
No? Okay.
Nope, no one.
Okay, so was, so what, for a question, Matt, we talked about, you know, the number of members for the commission.
Yes.
Is that something that, you know, so I have right now, you know, in front of me the copy. It's seven members currently with two alternate members. So is that something that we're looking to move forward with?
So I discussed that with HPC months ago. And they, they preferred seven plus two alternates.
Okay.
I rehashed that again with Kate within the last month. And she also still agreed that, similar to the conversation about planning board, that seven, the number of persons is less significant than the persons themselves. So there are three seats open for reappointment this year. Kate, Wes, and Tony. Kate would like to be reappointed, and I would like to reappoint her. Wes is not interested in being reappointed to HPC. Claims to, feels very burned out. And Kate didn't get back to me on what Tony's disposition was. But Tony also is less present of all the members. You know, in the time I've been going to their meetings, I went to probably four or five of them before I even met him. So, you know, I'm not sure what his disposition is, but I would tend to want to find a, you know, a new seat for the new person for that seat. That said, Kate offered something that we've never done that is actually very interesting, and Wes was very interested in. And it's, it's sort of what we've gotten started with Sue is the idea of sort of these ex officios or resource members, so to speak. They're basically volunteers who do not have voting power, who are interested in participating in maybe the mission of HPC or a certain aspect of it, but don't necessarily have the ability to commit the time to being at every meeting and weighing these options and going through these nominations and things like this. So Wes was interested in being a resource member. I think maybe even Steve Dyson could be interested in being a resource member. The idea being that these are individuals with expertise in their, you know, their respective fields that could be drawn upon as needed, you know, when the situation arose. And that they would be sort of attached to HPC as volunteer committee members, subcommittees, if you will.
Matt, what would you like to see as a minimum number of voting numbers, though?
Well, I mean, I'm okay with seven. I mean, I understand, and I'm the first one to say that, like, you know, we have a volunteer problem and we have a problem filling those seats. But to be honest, I've only once had a potential problem of quorum issues with HPC. They, you know, as a committee, they do tend to be very motivated and very, you know, conscientious of their responsibilities. And so, you know, I think if we can refresh the faces a little bit and get some new blood on there and a little bit of energy, I don't really have a problem with keeping it at seven. And then having a series of, you know, volunteer subcommittee members available at the fringes.
Okay. But what else do we need to know, then, about the revisions to Chapter forty-seven?
Really, there really, there really is nothing earth-shatteringly different. Chip could probably speak to it a little bit more intelligently. But a lot of it, it was just cleaning up the state's model law and making it specific to the village. And, you know, copying those, those things that we have in the existing code and just mashing them together. But, I mean, the process remains the same. The responsibilities remain the same. You know, it's, it's not some watershed moment where we're going from zero to a hundred. We're going from ninety-nine point five to ninety-nine point six, you know. It's, it's really not a significant alteration. It's just taken five years to dig through the mire to fix all the problems.
Is a Latin interest a reflection of that? That is, it's, it borders on a meaningless revision as far as the essence of it is concerned?
I would not describe it that way. It's considerably meatier, I would say, than the current code. And that's only because it's a reflection of, it's based on the most current model code that Chippo prepares. Whereas our old code was modeled on their older model, and that was just a lot thinner. But subs, but a lot of it's just sort of procedural, I would, clarity. I would say, so I, no, I would not describe it as meaningless, but I would also, just to be, but to be clear, I mean, this is a wholesale change. And it's repealing the existing law and replacing it with a new one. But it's replacing one with what is, in essence, the current model that Chippo provides, tweaked to meet the village's, you know, unique needs. There's a couple of things in there that are, that are a little bit different from the model, but nothing that I think is particularly controversial. In essence, it still is going to have the same powers and authorities and roles that it currently has. But it's going to have a better, it's going to have a better guide as to how it conducts its business.
So I just have one thing I'd like to change. When it regards appointments, it says, "Members of the commission shall be appointed by the mayor, subject to approval by the village board." I would like that to say, "Members of the commission are subject to the approval by the village board." Because the way that currently writes is that the mayor is the one who's actually doing the appointing. I just want to be crystal clear that any member that's on that commission is by majority approval of the five-member village board.
Well, appointment and approval are different, but.
That language is the same as it is for planning board and zoning board. I mean, that's just.
I'd like to change it in all of them. Because the way these, the way these appear when you read them is that the mayor is the one who is appointing the members. So I'm picking those seven members and saying, "I appoint you, subject to the village board approval." I just feel that as a board, we should work as a board. And I would like to have all of those just say that members are subject to approval by the village board because that's what we do. When we sit down for reorg, we look at potential candidates and we, we say, you know, the majority rule. So, and I've seen this happen for the past three years for every reorg I've done. So I just want to be more transparent in our wording. And I think that we need to correct that for this planning board, zoning board as well.
Is there someone who actually has to do the appointing before the board can?
Well, if that's a ceremonial thing, that's different. But I, and we can add a sentence on, but I just feel that we need to make it clear that any appointment on any of our commissions or decision-making boards is not an appointment by the mayor. It is an agreement among the board, the village board of trustees. The mayor is included on that board, but it's not, I don't sit up here with, you know, a hammer and say, "I hereby appoint ye." So I just want to, if we can clean that up, I think it would go a long way.
If that, well, I don't think it's a problem for this one, if that's what you want. But New York State law, I mean, that's one of the things the mayor does. The mayor makes appointments, and the board ratifies those.
Well, interesting, interesting, Chip, but I, in this case, I got to go with Deb here. I'm looking at our code. "Zoning Board of Appeal consists of five members appointed by the Board of Trustees in accordance with village law." Planning board, appointed by the village board.
So it's got to be the same.
Yeah, okay, well, we can make that change. The other thing that I would just want to point out, just so people are aware of it. So one of the unique features that, meaning it wasn't part of the model, was that in terms of the members, and again, this isn't absolutely essential because if you can't do it, then the law gives you wiggle room. But this law provides that a member of the HPC, one member should be a member of the planning board. And there's really very good reason for that because they have overlapping jurisdiction for some applications. And the other, another says that another member shall be a member of the ZBA. That's not currently the case. And I don't know whether yours, any members of your ZBA are interested in that position. So I just wanted to point that out. There's nothing wrong with that, but you should at least be aware of the way this is.
Yeah, so the interesting, yeah, so the interesting thing about, about our current code that's different than the proposed code is that there is a caveat in the proposed code that gives you an out.
Oh, this, this has it, too. It says, "In the event that the village board determines that any of the positions subscribed in subsections one through seven, which are all those qualifications, cannot be filled by persons so qualified. The village board may fill any such position by appointing persons qualified under Section eight," which is basically somebody who's interested in historical preservation.
Right, that's what, that's what the new code says, right?
Yeah.
That's not what our current code says. Our current code does not give us that ability. It just has, quote, "to the extent available."
Yeah, which I think is, you know, right. But if not available, then you can appoint somebody else.
Well, exactly. But, but I can tell you that that opinion is different, depending on who you ask. And the, I prefer the proposed version better because it's quite clear what the extent available really means, you know, that.
And again, that's both, both those are just languages that track the two different models.
Right.
The original model included the language in our current Chapter forty-seven. And the new one includes that different language. I mean, substantively, I don't think it's really that different, but maybe the language is better.
Yeah, I think, I think the current language is more limiting for the village board than the proposed language. At least potentially interpreted, that could be interpreted that.
Could be, I suppose. So I'm just making some, I just want to make sure I don't miss any of these issues.
So I guess another comment would be, you know, I don't have a problem with ex officio members as long as they're not voting members, so I'm fine with that. But I, but I just would make this statement that just because a person is not a voting member, doesn't mean that they're not influential on the decisions that the voting members make.
It's true of any resident.
I agree. I just wanted to just state it in case it wasn't obvious.
Yeah, and by the way, just also to be clear, this code doesn't say anything about ex officio members. And frankly, I don't think it, and I wouldn't recommend that it do. I mean, any board can, can do that because, or by definition, they can't vote. They're not official members, but.
It's what the town of Amherst has. The town of Amherst has these resource members or resource officers or whatever that are not voting commission members.
But it, but it's nothing, it's nothing in my opinion needs to be worked into. It's not in the current draft.
I would agree. I would agree. I think it's just a, it's an opportunity for residents to become involved without having to commit to, you know, a tenure on a board.
No, I agree. I think it's a great idea. The other comment or question I have, Matt, is for the Certificate of Appropriateness application procedure. Is, so one of the things is like a landscaping plan is applicable, proposed color scheme, samples of building materials to be used. Are those, are those still being worked out? Those, like, what, what is actually going to be looked at by the commission? Or is this what is being proposed, what I have on this copy here?
Okay, so what you're looking at is only what's applicable to a property that is currently designated?
Yes.
Okay?
Yep.
With regards to residential properties,
Okay.
that answer remains unresolved.
Okay, so that's the one they're still working on?
That would be the design guidelines that they're still working on.
Okay, I just wanted to.
Which will not change this.
Okay.
But what this would, what the design guidelines would do is, at the very front of them, they have a flow chart that says, like, "Are you a historic property, yes or no?" And goes through the process. And if it get, and they're talking about how to go about sort of, you know, slicing off the residential from the commercial. And, and, you know, they're getting into some weeds, as you can imagine, and some gray areas of like, you know, "What about the castle? The castle's a residential property, but they might be using it for a commercial purpose." And like, you know, blah, blah, blah. So like, they're, they're starting to get into the, like, atypical situations and things. But the point is, is that eventually, the hope is that there's going to be a split. That you're going to need a certificate of appropriateness for your residential historic property when you do X, Y, and Z, but not A, B, and C.
Okay, I got it. Yep, thank you. Okay. Well, I don't have any other questions on. Is there anyone else, Keaton, who would like to speak? Or any board members who have questions or thoughts?
No, there's a room right now, there's only Kelly and Jeff. I'll ask again if they, they have anything to add from the public. Okay.
If not, let me just, there's one other suggestion that I would make to change here in Section four on the terms, because, you know, we're going to be talking about the planning board law in a minute. And as that's drafted, it basically doesn't specify the terms in the law. It basically says, "Serve terms as appointed by," you know, "determined by the board," which then you can do by resolution. I think we might want to do the same here because there was some discussion previously about trying to get these terms all organized. So this, this currently calls for four-year terms. We've been doing three-year terms for the planning board. ZBA has five-year terms. Without having to decide right now how long the HPC, and it's fine if it's four, but it doesn't necessarily need to be here in the law. We can just say that you guys can decide how long those terms are without having to go and amend the law.
Agreed.
So I will make that change as well before the next meeting for when presumably you're going to vote.
Okay, so are we okay, then, with closing this public hearing?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to close it. Matt seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Then let's move into the next public hearing. So I will make a motion to open the public hearing for the continuation of the May eleventh, twenty-twenty, public hearing on the proposed Parks Master Plan and Guidance Documents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, Keaton, is there anyone who would like to comment on that?
Kelly or Jeff, you are, you are welcome to comment on Picture Our Parks twenty-twenty-five. Also, Nick, more than welcome.
Hey. I haven't seen any emails or anything come from anybody about it, so.
Okay, so Matt, do you, do you want to leave this open still? Because we kind of take, or come to your thoughts.
I do, actually, because Izzy and I are going to have a conversation tonight when the board meeting ends. And there's going to be an article in The Bee. So I'm guessing there's going to be a little bit more, you know, noise and traffic after that. So we should leave it open.
Okay, great.
All right.
So then I will make a motion to leave the public hearing open for the Parks Master Plan and Guidance Documents for our next meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So next, we're going to move into the suspension of rules for public participation. So if you have an issue or a comment or a thought about the village, we ask that you state your name and address, and I'll let Keaton take it from there.
Right now, Nick Roth has raised his hand, so we'll let him go first.
We need a second.
Oh, sorry.
Second.
Matt, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Nick, you're more than welcome to have a few minutes to talk to the board.
Thank you, Keaton. Nick Roth, one-three-five Oak Grove. I participated in the Zoom meeting, but the last board meeting, and I believe it was Trustee Yates who said that you're beginning to take a look at the budget to see what can be trimmed going forward in light of the pending bad news. I've been reading articles in the news from the county comptroller predicting very ugly numbers for the reduction in sales tax. And I'm just interested in learning this evening what progress you have made since the last board meeting and beginning to go through the budget, next year's budget, obviously, line by line, and where adjustments, downward, downward adjustments can be made.
Nick, I kind of threw that out there more as an exercise for us to start. I think we're still waiting on, I think there's a Heroes Act that is supposed to kind of reinstate some of that. So it was more of a statement for us as members to start thinking about the areas of the budget that we, that we look at and touch before we come to our budget meeting. And are there things within those that we could potentially cut? So I don't have a list that I put together since our last meeting. I don't know if anybody else.
Okay. I'm sorry?
That I don't know about any other board members, if they have.
Okay. Has, has Nick Tom? Okay, has has Knight Tom issued any guidance on this topic since the last meeting?
Not that I never, I haven't heard of anything.
No, I mean, I did see. Sorry, Nick, I did see something from Chuck Schumer. What their initial, the initial dollar values that they were throwing into the Heroes Act for this year and following year. But that was going to be there and it was by broken down by municipality. And it was, I mean, it was very favorable for us dollar value wise, but I think it was also a bit of a. Pie in the sky number, they were going in high expecting it to get cut down. So the numbers that they were showing us were probably inflated by fifty to a hundred percent. But based on my understanding of our of the the percentage impact that. The sales tax revenue will have on the village, which is relatively small because the lion's share of the revenue is tax dollars, property tax dollars. That any money that we got from the Heroes Act, should they actually execute that, would likely close that gap and then some.
Okay, I I heard just a few minutes ago when you were discussing the composition of the HPC board about possibly volunteer resources. As you start to get in to look at the next budget, would you consider volunteer resources amongst the residents? That could maybe offer some insight and guidance that the board members have not considered?
Or?
For trying to find ways to reduce the budget in the village.
I I'm sorry, Nick, I didn't understand exactly, can you rephrase that or?
I I'm sorry, excuse me. I heard during the topic of the composition of the HPC, you, the idea was kicked around, maybe you should have. Volunteer resources where they don't have voting power, but were able to put input into some decisions. Is that what I heard about ten fifteen minutes ago?
Yep, you did, yeah, so we were talking about. People who are interested in serving on Historic Preservation Commission, they're not village residents, but they have knowledge, then they.
Or they could be village residents, but they don't want to be on the board.
Well, we're that too.
Right.
Too, but.
Okay, so my my question, Deb, was would you be willing to consider a similar approach? When you start to construct the budget for the next fiscal fiscal year of possibly getting input from village residents? Who have broad based business experience, budgeting, financial, et cetera. And possibly helping to identify some areas that could be considered for reduction.
Absolutely, yeah, I mean, our budget is accessible, anybody can look at it and comment. And and if you have cost saving ideas, we'd love to hear them, you or anyone else.
Okay, thank you, all right, and I have one more question. I I am still twenty five hundred miles away from the village. Have the gates been put in the dam as of yet?
Not yet.
Are they going to be put in the season?
Hopefully, Ben.
Hang on a second.
We just discussed it earlier.
Yeah, I mean, the the issue, the issue, Nick, is that is that thus far by by government order, we've been, we've been at fifty percent staff. And it takes a full complement of DPW crew to install them and and to actually do that operation. So the discussion earlier tonight was we're not likely to have full staff at DPW any sooner than June first. And and then pending the government's, you know, the governor's orders, possibly not until after June sixth. But once we have a full complement of staff, it would be. The first thing on the list to get done.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, and I just want to congratulate, I remember at the last board meeting, learning that Mr. Phelan has retired. I knew that that was happening and I want to congratulate Administrator Kindred and and Ben by very loudly saying his position would not be filled. Given the current circumstances, I know the DPW does a very good job and they've got their hands full and short staff. But I I think that's a prudent decision and I was very pleased to hear that. And that's the end of my comments for this evening.
Thanks, Nick.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
Hey, with that, we only have one more resident in attendance, Jeff H. If you'd like to speak. Okay. Oh, Jeff, would you like to speak?
Yeah, 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 Jeff, also, also one of my.
Name and address, please.
One sixty one Mill Street.
Fastening?
Eveny.
Can you spell that?
K E A V is Victor E N Y.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
So I don't know how the Jeff H got on there, I'm a Microsoft user, so sorry about the Jeff H thing. I actually am here about an agenda item that's coming up about offensive lighting. So I didn't mean to be a creeper on the meeting and be quiet and not comment or anything, so I can be quiet until then.
Oh, no, no, this is your time.
Yeah.
Because because later on in the the agenda, there's no public participation.
Yeah, mate, tell us your thoughts.
So guys, I'm just, I'm just here was I read in the Amherst Bee about the offensive lighting. So in November, I complained about offensive lighting from my neighbor at one fifty three Mill Street to Tim. And he said there was no village code covering. Claire, you know, from lights in the village, but he would suggest one coming up in the next meeting. So that was in November, I'm going to share my screen. I think somebody else is sharing, whoever's sharing, unshare. Agenda, okay, let me see if I can share. All right, so. This is the light coming from my neighbor's garage, which I complained about, this is my living room here. And. You know, Tim said, hey, there's nothing we can do about that because there's no code covering glare. So let me. Just share one more picture here. Screen. So this is what it looks like with our lights off coming into our house. Now, this comes into our bedroom and my office. So I read you're voting on a code for offensive lighting. And I just wanted to chime in the meeting, I put an offensive light on the side of my house as a response to this because the neighbor actually. Cut down a fence in between our properties and and I realized, you guys, this is the last thing you need is neighbors bickering, fighting in your meeting. I've looked into quite a bit of it. So I just wanted to say, hey, look, I'm willing to change my light, but I really want my neighbor to put a light with some baffles on their garage. Because it's very offensive to me and it's been going on since they moved in. So that's my piece. Let's stop sharing.
So I would I would assume that you are in favor of. Their current code as we have proposed.
As long as they have to change their light finally, sure, yeah, I'm I'm in favor of it. I don't know, you know, how the board feels about it or what your notions were on it, I didn't know that there was a vote on it. To my wife forwarded. An article from the Amherst Bee to me the other day.
Well, so so that's actually the the reason for this amendment. You know, and and specifically here, you can see what's on the screen here, you know. To be, you know, artificial lighting shall be shielded or aimed to eliminate unnecessary illumination and to ensure that there's no glare, light pollution, light trespass onto adjacent properties. No such light shall be of such intensity to create a nuisance or detract from the use and enjoyment of an adjacent property. So the second this becomes law, assuming, of course, it does. Now our code enforcement officer has something to. Use to address your issue with your neighbor and your neighbor is compelled to comply with this law. Penalty, you know, pending, you know, penalty in in village court.
Sure. Okay.
Yeah, I think that's the perfect example of what I think we realize is it can be an issue.
Yeah, I I mean, I I asked for them to to change it, there's, you know, we're just one of the Hatfield and McCoy. Relationship, it's not good, so.
Well, in any event, once we pass the law, Tim will have something he can he can work from.
Okay, appreciate it.
Okay.
And you don't want to, and if you haven't already given Tim those pictures, you'll want to give him those because.
I did.
Obviously, Tim doesn't work at night when that picture was taken and when the lighting's offensive, so.
Yeah, so Tim, Tim said, look, he can't, he couldn't come by in the evening.
Right.
Um, because he doesn't work at night, he doesn't get paid overtime, you know, and I get it. So I did send him the pictures in November, but he said, hey, I I'm going to suggest a code change in an upcoming meeting that was November. I realized things take time and, you know, we just went through COVID, so. You know, I just wanted to come and say my piece, I didn't want it to be like, okay, the code's going to be enforced against me. Which I did, honestly, I did put up an offensive light on the side of my house. I mean, a lot of it was because she cut this fence down in between our properties and I travel for work and I, you know, my wife. And my kids here, I kind of felt uncomfortable with this neighbor. So I built another fence right away and the guys were great about giving me a permit very quickly. But I put that light up the first night because I just. It was just a very odd move, she cut down a vinyl fence with a sawzall at like two o'clock on a Tuesday for no reason. I asked her why and she just said, because I want to, so. Odd situation and again, I'm sorry to unload this on you guys, I know you got better things to do.
This is what we do.
Yeah.
Well, we have one solution coming anyway, so we pass it.
Okay, appreciate it.
All right, but I would just point out, though, then if you do have a light that's deliberately shining in your neighbor's yard and she makes a complaint now, I mean. Code enforcement office is going to enforce this law.
Absolutely, I'm willing to, as soon as the law is put on, I'm willing to change the light fixture. Absolutely, but I felt that it was the only way, I mean, I really feel like that this came to light because this neighbor of mine probably came and and. Got in Tim's ear over and over and over and over again, and then finally in May, it comes up for a vote. I complained in November and now it's up for a vote in May, I mean, it's months later, the squeaky wheel gets grease. You know, and and I told Tim, my intention was to put up a light, A, because I don't feel comfortable with her. And B, because I want her to have a taste of her own medicine. So, you know, it took me doing that to have her come down and bug Tim for months to have this come up for a vote.
We actually had another resident as well that brought this up as well with us, so you're not alone in having lighting issues.
Apparently, light trespass on mill is a thing. But but for the record, you know, as far as the timing is concerned, it's not a question of squeaky wheel, it's a, this was something that was. Due to come up for a vote in March and then got postponed because of the pandemic. And so we're 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 three months back trying to catch up on all of our old public hearings and things, so.
Okay. All right, guys, that's that's it, that's my piece, I'll I'll let you get back to finishing out the meeting, I appreciate the time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies, gents.
All right, Keaton, anyone else or is that?
Um, actually, we had one person enter just now. It's it's not a Zoom bomber, I do recognize the name, so we're good there, Team Hunt is the name. Welcome to the meeting, Team Hunt, we are in the suspension of rules portion. If you'd like, you can take up to three minutes to speak on any topic related to the village. That's up to you, I I call on you now, Team Hunt, if you'd like to speak. All right, I guess they do not want to speak.
Turn it back to the board.
Okay, so I will make a motion to close the suspension of rules for public participation. All in favor?
Hi.
I. Okay, so going on. To my reports and resolutions. So resolutions, number one and number two, as they appear on the agenda, are dealing with payroll vouchers and budget transfers. So I'll make a motion to approve number one and two as they appear on the agenda.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Resolution number three is regarding the conversation we had as a board, whether or not we wanted to keep. The planning board at seven members or downsize that number to five. So I'll read off the resolution and Judy, why don't we do a roll call vote for this? So resolve that the proposed amendments to chapter one twelve zoning of the village code regarding the number of members and their terms. That was the subject of public hearings on Monday, March ninth, twenty twenty and Monday, May eleventh, twenty twenty is hereby adopted at local law five of twenty twenty. And that was, it doesn't state it on the resolution, but it was to keep the board at seven members for three year terms.
Well, it's not not necessarily three year terms, it's terms to be determined by the board.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right.
I'll second.
Hey.
Are we ready to do a roll call?
Sure.
Trustee Murphy.
Yeah, no, I I'm I'm in favor of the favor of this, as we talked about last time, how the zoning board seemed to like the seven members, they thought they worked well together, that. Say, that's what they want, that's we should keep for them, so I'm in favor of it.
Matt?
Back to me.
Come back to you?
Yeah.
Okay, trustee Yates?
Yeah, basically what John said, you know, based on public participation, there were people from the audience when we held the public hearing. Basically, we threw this out there as we do, that's kind of what board is supposed to do is poll the public to see and get feedback. And based on the feedback, it was also based on board members from the planning board, they were in favor of keeping it seven, I completely agree with that. You know, should in the future we need to revisit it, we can always revisit it. Also, we also dealt with the terms on this because the state said that if we were going to do a seven member board, we have to have a seven year term. And we felt by setting that term is a bit onerous, in my opinion, to ask a volunteer to commit to seven years. So that's why we also changed the language so that the village board can set the term as well, so for that, I vote yes.
Deputy Mayor Piazza?
Without any comment, yes.
Okay. Back to you, Matt, or? Mayor Rogers?
Sure, I guess I'll go. I was checking with Chip whether or not I should. Ah, see, he wasn't paying attention.
I heard you say that, but I didn't, I wasn't looking at the, did you send me a?
I I chatted to you, I noticed you were not looking at your screen, Mr. Greco.
I didn't notice, I didn't, I had actually just closed the chat thing because it was anyhow, I'm sorry.
I guess my question is, should I? Should I have an opinion on this at this point?
I it it's.
It really shouldn't matter, but.
It it really shouldn't matter, but I, so I leave that up to your. Judgment, I mean, it it's not, this has no direct impact on, but I I would say this, because that project is still. Going to be on their agenda. After reorganization. I don't, I would err on the side of recusing yourself.
All right.
Or abstaining from voting.
Yes, so, I mean, at this point, it's it's a little bit moot because it's already three to, you know, three votes positive, but. You know, I would say that. For the record, I would be in favor of this direction and it makes sense, as Mr. Yates had mentioned, that, you know. Seven year terms are onerous and and ultimately, that is really all we're addressing here is the length of term to make it consistent with the way the village has been operating this entire time. However, given my current potential, you know, perceived conflicts of interest. However, given my current potential, you know, perceived conflicts of interest, uh, I will abstain from this vote.
Okay. And Mayor Rogers?
So, um, I vote yes to keep it at seven terms, uh, seven members. And I think I echo trustee Yates' sentiments about a seven-year term is way too much for anyone to commit as a volunteer for any type of board or organization in that capacity.
Good.
Motion passed four to one.
Chip, you're muted.
Four to zero.
No, four, four to one abstention.
Yeah.
Uh, Chip, you're muted if you're.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I just wanted to add again, I mean, this has nothing to do with
Right.
because you guys voted, but I just want to be make it clear that obviously, in terms of the terms in the seven year, that, that's something that the New York State Village Law specifies, but as far as we've been able to tell, the village of Williamsville has never actually had seven-year terms for their planning board members.
Right.
This is really a, a codification or ratification of what has been practiced for as long as anybody knows and remembers.
Right.
So, whatever that's worth.
Thanks, Chip.
Okay, so, um, resolution number four then is in regards to the offensive lighting resolved that the proposed amendments to chapter 73, public order of the village code to prohibit excessive or offensive lighting that was the subject of public hearings on Monday, March 9th, 2020, and Monday, May 11th, 2020 is hereby adopted is local law six of 2020.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Is, um, deals with our shared service agreement that we have with the town and, uh, our director of community development and strategic planning. Whereas the town of Amherst employs Margaret Hamilton Winship, Director of Community Development, Strategic Planning, whose professional services are also benefit to the village of Williamsville for certain economic development-related activities and projects. And whereas the town and village agree to continue to share the services of said employee, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to sign the employee shared services agreement with the town of Amherst, dated January 1st, 2020, for the continued sharing of services of the Director of Community Development, Strategic Planning, and the calendar year 2020 at a salary with fringe benefits of no more than eight thousand, two hundred, thirty-two and dollars and seventy-three cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, I couldn't hear everyone. Okay, so, um, that's it for my resolutions and, um, I, we'll just, you know, take it a week at a time here going forward with, you know, who's in the office and what we're doing with staffing and we'll kind of wait to hear back from Chip and, um, just take it a day at a time. And so next for his reports and resolutions is trustee Murphy.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. One quick question, do the lights in your office go off? You seem very dark.
Is it very, I'm gonna put the lights on. No, I didn't have them on, so let me try.
She likes the glow.
That's better, that's better.
In the last like couple hours, it's gotten really dark, so.
Yeah, it was fine for a while. You just really got.
You know, I'm really just trying to hide out.
So, uh, first five, two resolutions tonight. Um, the first one is, uh, resolve the purpose of proposed amendments to chapter 97 taxation of the village code to adjust the disable, disability tax exemption limits as the subject of public hearing on Monday, May 11th, 2020 is hereby adopted is local law seven of 2020.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, and the second one, um, is also about taxation. So there's a few resident comments about, you know, getting the tech exemptions for seniors, uh, low-income seniors, just to kind of update that because it hadn't been updated in, I don't know, almost 20 years or something. Just kind of bring it back up to, you know, the same levels the town has. So the second resolution is resolve the proposed amendments to chapter 97 taxation of the village code to adjust the senior tax exemption limits that were subject to the public hearing on May 11th, on Monday, May 11th, 2020 is hereby adopted is local law eight of 2020.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And a special thank you to Mary Loether for bringing this to our attention.
Yep.
Yeah, and as for, um, reports, um, I just, I, I sat in on, uh, HPC for, uh, trustee E2 last, uh, few weeks ago now. Uh, it was very interesting hearing all their discussions about, um, different historic buildings. Um, and they were, um, they had approved the nomination for 75 Evans. They're gonna have a public hearing in June. Um, then they were gonna bring it to us, just as it designated it as historic. You know, after their meeting in June. And the only other report I have is wants to have her with my son, Jack. It's his ninth birthday today. Other than that, no more reports.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. Uh, next for his reports and, um, resolutions is deputy mayor Piazza.
Um, really, uh, no big thing. Uh, I think you may have all heard by this time that the, uh, Old Home Days is canceled for this coming year. And you already know about the Yard Festival, I suspect. That was made official too, was it not?
It was.
Yeah, so our summer's certainly going to be very different. Um, we'll see how that plays out. But, um, but other than that, no, no real report on activity and I have no resolution, so I'll pass it on.
All right, thank you, deputy mayor. Uh, next for his reports and resolutions is trustee Yates.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just, I wanted to, uh, um, basically give an extra, um, appreciation to all of our, uh, veterans who actually served and lost their life during duty, um, as we, um, memorialized that on Monday. So thanks to all those families out there that have obviously lost someone serving our country. Um, also, uh, beautification, if you didn't notice, uh, they worked in the parks that they could this past Saturday over the weekend and planted flowers, cleaned up, um, started making us, uh, look even better. So, um, they've been out working hard and, um, doing what they do best. Um, they'll continue to, to do the other parks, um, and the things that they manage as far as planting. Uh, Wentzier County turns the water back on course, which should be in the next week or so. Um, WBA, uh, we met on this, another Zoom call with them. Um, they have officially canceled, um, the rest of the music on mains, um, for the rest of the year, um, and, and left it to individual restaurants if they wanted to have a band outside or whatever. So, um, the WBA just felt that was probably in the best interest of them. So, and I, I think I wanted to make a point too, you know, I was at a, um, not a village business, but I was at a business and there was an individual who was having a problem being required to wear a mask indoors and he refused. And I just wanted to say to the general public, if you watch this either now or later, or for the B to remind people that, um, right, the, the individual said it's not a law that he doesn't have to wear a mask indoors. And they were offering this individual a mask. But that's their store. And e- even though currently there is a mandate by the governor under the emergency act currently that you have to wear a mask in a public place in a building such as where he was going into. But outside of that, if that business, it's their business, if they want you to wear a mask and they provide you a mask, then you have to wear a mask. It's their business and they have a right to not serve you. If they want you to wear a purple mask or whatever, if they provide it for you, you're supposed to do it. It's their business. And why would you affect a local business that could be shut down under the current situation? So I just say, we have to be, you know, cognizant of these businesses that they're just trying to do the best they can. So don't make it harder on them than they have to be. It's not easy. Um, and also I've seen a comment too about, you know, canceling the, uh, the events that we've heard of. And there's not a single board member, um, they were blaming one of the town board members about, uh, the cancellations of some of the stuff. It doesn't matter which board. There's not been a board member that doesn't want to have these things, um, but and I, I'll say it very clearly. I've said to all the committees that I'm over, anything that I manage, whether it's the art festival or our garden walk, um, or anything, is that if the committees don't feel comfortable serving the public, and some of those are at our at-risk groups, I, I don't think it's fair to make them run any kind of event. And I don't think it's fair for anybody to feel ashamed to not feel comfortable. So, you know, we all have to be patient. We all have different opinions on this. And while we may not agree, I just think that everybody needs to take a breather. So, um, then tree board, um, they, we boarded the trees, so trees will be going in. Um, we will be doing the, or actually it's out to bed. Um, we do have the saplings coming in, so June 6th, the tree board will, um, in a safe manner, give out free trees. So, uh, we hope to see you come out and be a part of festivities, uh, at our first, um, farmer's market. So, um, EAC is kind of taking a break at the moment until they're needed. So that's all I have as far as reports. I'll hand it back to, uh, Mayor Rogers. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, trustee Yates. Uh, next for his reports and resolutions is trustee E2.
Uh, nothing to report tonight other than, uh, HPC is, uh, working on their guidance document. And they also have, uh, worked out a, um, a shared, um, online Zoom training between the, the village and the town, um, which will be May 27th. Is that tomorrow? Yep, tomorrow at 7:00 PM. And, uh, that will, um, benefit them for, uh, training hours and, and whatnot. So, um, they're, uh, they're pretty excited about actually being able to get everybody to participate. So, um.
Hello, Matt. So if that, if the village board wants that, well, it doesn't matter because they, statutorily, they don't need their training hours. But but really the village board has to approve municipal training like you did for the, the remote training that I provided for.
Right. So do we have to do that before they do it?
No, it can be done after. And actually, like I said, for HPC, technically, it's not even required because they don't, unlike planning and zoning board members, they don't actually have a statutory training requirement. So forget I said it.
Okay. Well, they're prepared to submit the names of those who were in the training anyway. So Judy, that's coming at you eventually.
Yes.
All right, uh, I have a, um, I need to motion to go off agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Wanted to catch up on something that was on the, uh, the agenda from last board meeting, but had to be tabled because we didn't have her resume. Uh, we have since received her resume. Um, so, uh, resolved that Emily Garrett of 80 South Cayuga Road, Williamsville is hereby appointed as a member of the Historic Preservation Commission until the end of the 2019, 2020 official village year, which is basically in the next six weeks.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And motion to go back on regular agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's it for me.
Okay. Great, thank you, trustee E2. Um,
You're very welcome, Mayor Rogers.
That's good. We got another, we got another member back on there. So that's good.
That's right.
Um, okay, so, um, we're done with, um, board. Um, let's go into staff reports. Administrator Kindren.
I got a call from Gregory Bennett from the town today. He wanted to let me know that they will be, um, repaving their parking lot this weekend. So he just wanted to check, Ben, he wanted to check and make sure that, you know, you're okay with it and that all the trustees are okay with it. Um, park's obviously not rented this weekend. There's no wedding for parking. So.
Sounds good.
Farmer's market, so that's perfect.
Right. So that's kind of what I said. This is a good weekend to do it. And also I just wanted to say that we are gearing up to send out tax bills this weekend, so people will be receiving them June 1st.
So Judy, do you want to talk a little bit about, um, we are going to be open then our full hours starting June 1st at Village Hall for tax bills or?
Yes. Starting June 1st will be, the building will be open from nine to four regular hours. I'm gonna, I guess, up here to tape off six feet length in front of the window so that more than one person comes in. They'll be socially distanced. We're gonna put a, a notice at the door that the building is only open for uh, tax payments and the other thing that it will be open for is the court because they are coming back June 1st. Court itself will not be open. They're, they're not allowed to have any kind of hearings or anything. But Morgan can come back and she can catch up on all the deposits and data entry that need to be done.
Okay.
So. Any questions?
Why aren't we using spray paint to mark out the floor?
Well, we thought about asking if we could borrow somebody if they had any left over, but maybe tape was a better option.
You'll be admitted. I got tons. We're good.
I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Administrator Kindren. Deputy Treasurer Pascoe, anything to report?
Um, I have.
We need to sign the warrants. We, we need to all sign that, so.
Need two more signatures.
Yeah, I'll give mine tonight. Okay, um, attorney Greco?
Nothing this evening. I, well, this was on my work sessions. We can discuss it then, but we're still waiting to, to find out whether the governor is going to extend executive orders 2021 and 20215, uh, beyond June 6th or the ability to conduct these meetings remotely. If, if he doesn't, then we're either gonna have to hold in-person meetings that presumably, well, I don't know what we're gonna do. So everyone seems to be assuming he's going to extend it, but time's getting short.
Right. So then that would mean we would meet here June 8th if he doesn't extend it.
Right.
We'd be here. Okay. Well, we'll see what, what happens, I guess.
At that point, if, if, I would imagine that he would. But could we under the law, like at least have us in the building, but not general public? And basically do a video Zoom call?
I, I don't, I, I don't think we would have the authority to, I mean, I think we get him, we could institute distancing measures, but I don't think we can prohibit the public because there's nothing under the open meetings law generally that allows you to physically exclude the public. Yeah, no, everybody is. It's, I don't know what, you know, I mean, I think he's just, he, he's not focused on it or nobody in his office is focused on this right now. So, uh, hopefully there'll be some clarity on that issue.
I would think we just have such a small room that it's going to be hard. And then we're gonna have to limit people and then shut people out and it's.
Yep. Yeah, no, it doesn't make, it doesn't make any sense.
I do think that even if we go back, I do think we should try and figure out a way to offer, um, still doing a Zoom basically of us, you know, at the front of the room, the board. Because there's gonna be people that don't feel comfortable. And we, I think we should account, try to accommodate that as well. So people can participate if they want.
Right. And that makes sense, but, but it's even that requires that executive order of 202.1 to allow us
Right.
to do that. So.
Yeah.
So anyway, we'll just have.
We can still offer Zoom as an extra. So even if we allow, say, 10 people in the, in the building, if we determine that's what we can hold as far as public, then we have to shut everybody else out, right? Because there, there's gotta be a new executive order that'll say a, a limit, right?
Yeah. I presume, like I said, ho- hopefully they'll issue something in the coming days to provide some guidance.
Sure. Local governments. There's potential for there to be a lot of people at the next one. We have the, uh, public hearing on the 13 local map landmarks that night. So. You know, I, I don't want to, I, I don't want to, you know, sound Debbie Downer-like, but, uh.
Hey, use another name. Use another name, Keith. Come on, I'm right here.
Goldie Downer.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sally. I don't know. Anyway.
Sad Sally, sad Sally, maybe. I don't know.
I mean, maybe what we could do, um, you know, we could have people take a number. I, I, I don't know exactly what we can do within the o- open meetings law. Maybe we allow up to five people in the room at a time to speak on this. You know.
Yeah, I mean, we can, obviously, we can space the chairs out like they've been doing at Cuomo's, you know, uh, press conferences where they're, you know, they're staggered, you know, every other row and everything and get X number of people in. Could we, could we have some sort of a projector setup that connects to the television and the television? And the television is in the conference room, and the conference room is like overflow seating?
I mean, we could, we could, yeah, to the, to the television, yeah.
How many people can fit in the conference room? Or more people, that's pretty small. Depends on, depends on if we have the table in there.
Yeah, but with six foot space, hopefully, it's not gonna be an issue. I, I just, I gotta believe they're gonna extend that through June. I just wish he would do it.
Could we ask the town?
So people can plan.
Okay. Should we, should we look into asking the town to use their?
Well, I actually. Oh, it could be, they have, they meet on, their meeting's on the 8th as well. So I actually was talking to this supervisor today, he was, we actually were discussing that issue a little bit, because I was wondering if he had heard anything. And, you know, they're, they're trying to figure it out.
Our son. Talk to him.
Would it give us any more room if we were to use the meeting house?
It would.
Yeah.
But if we advertised it at 5565.
Oh. Good point, Al.
Well, you know what, we're gonna have to wait and see what it says, and then we'll have to communicate via email to figure out what we're doing.
Right.
Because we don't know, we can only speculate right now.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I raised that issue with NICOM last week, and, and they said they don't know either. But, but as soon as they do, they'll put it up on their website, so I check that every day.
Okay. Right, anything else, Attorney Greco?
No, nothing.
Okay, Crew Chief Villanen?
Nope.
Okay. So then I, we have no executive session, so I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we'll go right back into work session where we left off with trustee E2.
Sure, make it my fault.
Yes, keep it super simple.
Yeah, so the rezoning of South Long is really just a, where, like a, where are we at with that now? What's the next step? What do we have to do? This is a question for Chip. You're muted. Muted. Still muted.
Sorry, I was just taking a look at NICOM's page, just to make sure they hadn't posted anything on it. Yes, I think we are now, I mean, we still have some title issues we need to work out for the deeds, but I think we, because we have the property descriptions, I think we're fine in terms of moving forward with the law, so.
So the next step, some, something about the planning board.
So it, it should be referred to the planning board, the, the law should be, it needs to be referred to the planning board for its recommendation. Any change to the zoning code has to go to the planning board for its recommendation under our code.
Okay. So how do we do that?
You, I can send it to them, I, I just will, now that we have the property description, I gotta make a, some, Judy, we don't still, but we don't have, I guess what we won't have yet are the SBL numbers.
I think I do.
For the new, for the new parcels, even though they haven't actually been deeded over yet?
All right, this, this is for 96 South, well, no, that's not it, sorry, maybe I don't.
It, it's okay, I, for, for what we're doing right now, we should just make sure.
86 South Long?
Uh, yes.
Yes. That's the depot property, that's.
This is just assessment notification. I thought these were on the same properties, they're not, these are just assessment notifications, that's all.
So anyway, there, there's two things that have, we, we still need to effectuate the transfer. And we're still waiting, I, I will check again with my partner tomorrow. We were still just waiting for some title issue to be clarified. And just not to bore you, anybody with the details, but that property and the, the circumstances under which, and when I say that property, basically, what is now the, the park over there, that had very unclear title when the village acquired title to it, you know, in the 1930s or whenever it was. So it's a little bit messy, but none of this really affects the rezoning aspect of it. It just zone, it just affects properly papering the, the fact that we're dividing that, that one lot into three separate lots.
It wouldn't be the Village of Williamsville if it wasn't messy, so.
But, and, and the reason why I know that and remember that is, is because when we got the grant for, for South Long, we had to demonstrate we owned the property, and it was a little bit not as clear. I mean, we definitely owned the property, but we didn't have your normal, oh, here's my abstracted title that shows, there was no, so any. So we still need to, to button all that up, but for, but there's no reason that we cannot make sure that that proposed law is on the agenda, the planning board's next agenda, just so they can make their recommendation, which I can't imagine any problem with.
Okay, all right, now let's get that, make sure that's.
Not yet.
Okay.
We'll see.
Do you have anything else, Matt?
Nope.
Um, trustee Murphy?
I don't have anything.
Trustee Yates?
No, I'm good for now.
Um, Keaton, can you pull up those artist renderings for Glen Park?
Okay.
Thank you. So, John, Glen Park Joint Board hasn't met in several months.
Correct, correct.
Because I know they canceled a couple months, right, do you remember when the last time was they met?
Uh. Calendar.
October.
Oh, no, no, it's, it's been in the new year, pretty sure.
Okay.
I could be wrong. Yeah, I think it's been in the new year, but the last couple that's been canceled, definitely since March.
Okay. So what I, what I have here is the nature play area that's over at Glen Park, when we initially started discussing that, when I started discussing that with the Glen Park Joint Board, part two of after Ben was able to design it and get it built, part two was to add some signage to it, and the signage was to be, you know, fun and colorful and kind of be an explanation point for anybody who's visiting the area to kind of look and say, oh, this is, this is what this is all about. So it was to kind of just put the bow on top of the package essentially. So Dave Bauer had sent me these renditions by a local artist, and I just kind of wanted to share them with the board and kind of get some thoughts and ideas about what you like or maybe don't like about them. And the idea is to use, like, we don't need to use all three of them, but, you know, we could certainly, I was gonna talk to Ben about placement and what he thought might be appropriate placement for them around the nature play area. So I just wanted to get the conversation moving.
I apologize.
Can he email to us?
Well, I, maybe Keaton can, the, the problem is they were emailed to my personal email because the village email wouldn't let them come through because of the size. If there's a way that I can get, I guess, well, I actually have all your own, your personal emails, so I can send them to the board.
How big are the signs?
Yeah, how big are these things?
Well, how big are the signs when they're made?
Yeah, yeah. It's a lot of writing.
That's what I, that's what I, we would need some help with, I would need to kind of get in contact with a fabricator to look at a cost and then, you know, to get some ideas on the size of what they should be. But, I mean, I'm envisioning, so if you're, if you're at, like, South Long Park, and right next to the restrooms, there's that description about the planters that are all along South Long and what they're supposed to do. I envision, you know, it doesn't need to be that big, but I envision kind of the same thing with, you know, just metal posts, if you will, with this graphic on it and this language.
Ah, that's better, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know why they saved it at such a low resolution, but I pulled up the Dropbox file, and I can forward this to everybody if they want.
Oh, do you want to do that? That would be great. All right, thanks.
No problem. So that was the first one?
Yep.
Should just be able to scroll down. Oh, there's only one page.
Yeah. I think they're in individual files, I'm gonna have to.
Go to the, go to the arrow at the left there, Keaton.
It's a good sized file there.
Hold on one second.
So Will, where are you?
I'm in Oniota, which is the home of Heartwick College.
Okay.
They have one of our instruments, and they just did an upgrade. It's actually the craft brewing laboratory that they have here, they designed about four or five years ago. They do malt and beer testing for all the local breweries, microbrewers and stuff. So it's offering a service to a small, you know, brewer or malter.
So this is the second one.
Yeah, for some reason, I can't just click over. Be nice.
Keaton, the, the arrow on the top left, right there, that should take you, there you go.
Right, thank you. I thought they would all be in a string, so thank you.
So that was, that's just a potential, if the joint board wanted to do like a T-shirt design, that's what that is. So that's not a sign that would go on the park.
Okay, it's very.
Reminds me of Woodstock.
I was gonna say, reminds me of, what you might call it, bonsai trees or something.
So all of these graphics were created by Nicole Sherry, and she is a local artist. And she had actually connected with Dave Bauer about this project, and she put these together, and if we wanted to go ahead forward with these and make these into, you know, signs, if you will, for the park, her invoice or cost for using those graphics would be $200.
For a graphic or for all of them?
For all of them, for, for all of, the whole thing, the, the T-shirt design, the everything, everything you're saying, so she.
I like, to me, I like this one the best, I, I don't know if they're supposed to be a series, that first one, to me, just as a passerby, a general public, I thought that maybe they were being forced to pick flowers, like it was child labor or something at first glance. I'm just being honest, what, a general public walks in like, what is this? Right, this one, to me, describes in what it is better than I think the first one.
Yeah, except that it's, I, I, I agree with you, except that I'm not sure I like the bullet points.
Yeah.
I like the picture of this, you know, that this kind of describes kids playing on logs and stuff, you know, chatting. That one girl, she's holding the sign up.
Got a little typo there with curiosity, no big deal.
So Matt, we could change those bullet points. If you want to keep, you know, if we want to keep the art, we could create whatever we want those bullet points to say.
Yeah, no, I like, I like that it's, it's informative signage, it's, you know, we could, we could probably find some, some other things to, you know, some benefits for why creative, you know, nature play is, is a desirable thing to participate in.
Right. Yeah, the graphic, I'm just saying, I like the graphic of this, didn't even really focus on the content of the bullets. The graphic of it describes a little bit more of what we've got. Although.
Thing I would, I would like to see is I would like to see a boy in that picture.
Thank you, I was gonna say the same thing, I'm like, but it's exclusively for women.
Yeah, it's like only women can do, yeah, right, so I would like to see definitely a, a boy in that.
Boys are over being forced to pick flowers.
They'll probably trample on them.
Give to the girl.
I mean, for being critical, I don't mean, I hate to be critical, but, but, I mean, the kids almost look like they're teenagers, but. I would like, because they almost kids like.
Yeah, they do.
Like a more age range, okay.
Yeah, maybe more age range, I mean, these look like teenagers, like they're loitering, you know, they might be smoking and drinking, you know, next.
I'd also like to include, like, other ethnicities as well. Everyone, they almost look like they're three sisters, like when I look at that, I go, oh, it's three sisters. So I kind of like the idea that creative nature play is about complete strangers, you know, getting together and just, you know, kind of interacting with one another and having fun, not just like, you know, bringing the family there to play, you know. So I, I'd like to see some of that as well.
Do we have a disclaimer that says that this log is 12 feet long to make sure that they're socially distanced appropriately?
Oh, it's gotta be 18 feet, you know, it's gonna be.
No, but it doesn't, that virus doesn't exist on, it doesn't stay on logs and stuff, does it?
Perfect.
I don't think it does, maybe it does, I shouldn't say that, but.
I think if you look at all the pictures, they do always make the hair color the same, because the first one where the kids were picking flowers, you know, the child labor law issue, they were all of the same hair color too.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I'd like to mix it up a little bit.
Yeah, so one of those kids on the.
The middle kid looks evil.
This one, one in the middle?
Yeah.
He's plotting something.
So Ben, do you, do you have any, like, does winter signs do stuff like this? Does anyone know if winter signs does or?
They do all the A-frame stuff, but, but I don't know if that's kind of what you, not necessarily an A-frame, but yeah, they do printing, so they may be able to print it.
But like on, it would need to be on something that's whether, you know.
Yeah, you want the interpretive signage.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll go back to see who did the South Long Park and Spring Street signage and get that manufacturer, I've got that somewhere.
Yeah, that.
Oh, that would be good.
Spring Street stuff looked really nice, that's kind of what we want.
Would it be in color then, if it's on metal?
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be on a, a, a polycarbonate.
Oh, okay.
Jeep that's then adhered, you know, mounted to metal brackets.
Yeah, there's one on the overlook, John.
Chip, would we need any kind of release from the artist?
What's that?
Potentially, yeah.
Would we need any kind of release from the artist?
Yeah, potentially, but if she's selling it to you, yeah, we'd want to make sure that we have, or she's either licensing you or selling it to you. I mean, there should be some sort of agreement.
Right.
And I think Judy, there is a licensing agreement for, that maybe we can just copy that was, for the artwork that was created for Glen Park. That artist, I know, gave us a, you know, there was some type of a release that we have in that pile.
From the photography?
No, for those, for the drawing, the drawing of the falls, have you ever seen their logo they had created? It's blue and red, and it has the falls. That was an artist, and there was a artist's release that I somewhere, I probably have a copy of it somewhere, because I needed it when I was on the board for something.
Okay.
We could look there and just maybe, you know, replicate that and, you know.
Can we put smiles on, can we put smiles on their faces, because they really look like, the girls on the log, the bullies, like chased them off and made them pick flowers. It's the only thing they get to do.
It is great a somber flower.
Okay, so smiles, I'm writing all this down to request all this.
I'm sorry, I mean, I, I like the concept, I'm not picking on it, but I just know what the public is gonna do, they're gonna say, oh my God, these poor kids.
I know. Okay, so it sounds like everybody kind of likes this general idea, and it's just a matter of tweaking the art to get it to be a little bit more.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Those, those children there, they have, they both have white hair, so only families can play.
Oh, Al. Oh, Al.
The, the joint board's probably asked, who's gonna pay for these signs?
Okay, so I, I knew they would come up.
And even hanging signs.
With an answer.
They love signs there, so.
I know, so, so initially, when we started this project, and I had asked the joint board for their support. I know. So, so initially, when we started this project and I had asked the joint board for their support going forward with the nature play area, they gave me a $10,000 budget to cover the building of the nature play area, which would be time for the Department of Public Works because they were the ones who were putting it together. And I don't, and for mulch, I believe we had an expense for mulch. So I know we haven't spent that $10,000, so it will be coming out of that, that fund.
They always ask for the $10,000 and ask for that $10,000 back. They think that they were like, it was a loan or something.
They think that was a loan.
They think it's out of their own personal pocket.
No, no, we were very clear. Actually, there, we took a vote. There was a majority vote and, and you know, anyone could go back and look at the minutes, but.
Do you know approximately when that was? Because they literally every time ask, where's the $10,000 that we loaned them to the nature play area or the difference they want back?
Well, you know what? They can read the minutes and that's what they agreed to and we're just finishing the project here.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, this, they say this every meeting though.
Oh, I know. Well, they used to say, yeah, it was, I understand. It was the same thing when I was there.
All right, so I'll try to reiterate that it was a $10,000 budget that's just being used, not.
Yeah, so there's no additional funds coming out of the Glen Park Joint Board.
Okay, certainly any, there certainly won't be any going back. Yeah.
No, there was.
So what, along those same lines, what's the deal with the, so the Glen Park Art Festival now, they're not just beginning, they're not just gonna get a check anymore. They have to have a reason to get the money? Because it's probably gonna come up once that, I mean, not this year, but.
Well, yeah, so the Glen Park Arts Festival is now under the group Historic Alwes Village Preservation.
Village Preservation Foundation.
Right, so do you want to explain that to John, how we're, how that's working?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that they have nailed down the exact what they're gonna do, but their opinion is for anybody that they're gonna be giving money, you know, funds out to, they basically kind of want to ask, you know, of what's, why do you need it? Is there, is there a designation for those funds? Where are those funds going towards, you know?
Yeah, it's not automatic.
Yeah.
It's all a grant.
Exactly.
And they have to justify it to the group.
Right, okay.
Right.
You know, and to that end too, I mean, the, the Art Festival Committee, you know, they might have a project that's near and dear to their heart, like, you know, sidewalk replacement or, you know, fill in the blank, something that relates both to park maintenance, but also affects the functioning of the art festival, that they may have a preference for that money to be spent on as well. And they just want, since they're, since they're no longer under the umbrella of the village.
Right.
And this money is, they're in control of the money, their, their opinion is, is that they should have part of the dialogue.
Right. Well, not only that, but they put in all the hard work too.
Right.
It's a massive undertaking and I know you know that all too well. So to that end, it should be their choice to say who's gonna get the funds.
Yeah, I just need an answer for when they ask, so.
What's that?
I just need an answer for when they inevitably ask.
Oh, yeah, always be prepared.
That's the answer, yeah.
So you probably, I don't, Glen Park usually doesn't meet in July and August. So you might not meet with them again until September.
Okay.
If we, I mean, unless you, are they, is there anyone interested in a Zoom meeting or no?
I, I mean, I can email Pete and have him send an email to everyone else and say if they want to do one in June or July. And then I can ask Keaton for the help.
I mean, and they may, and they may want to meet in June and July and or August because we've been, you know, just to kind of keep things moving, so.
Yeah, I'll send Pete an email. There's important discussions on lawn cutting that must be had.
Yes. It's the only discussion that's ever had in the months of June, July and August.
Only thing worth, worth talking about.
Yeah.
All right.
Oh, real quick too, Ben, do you want to give an update on the pavilion over at the Noel Nature Center, what we used to call or?
The walls are down.
It looks good.
It looks great. I love it.
Logging away, you know, a little, little bit as we can and getting some documents together for the roof. Because that's gotta go, it's gonna be CPG money. It's gonna be a little pain in the butt to bid. For such a small job, but that's what we're gonna do.
Can people go, do you have it blocked off so you can?
You just can't walk on the grass.
Okay.
It's, it's open. You can, you can walk in it.
Is, can we, can we get some picnic tables in there?
Yeah.
Oh, Deb. Picnic tables in Glen Park?
Yeah, I know. It's, it's just, you know what? It's just a crazy idea, isn't it? Park with picnic tables. I know, hey, look.
The Colonel has been marching around that place. I'll drop him and run.
You know, I just, I just, I can't understand why that's such an issue there of, of like not, especially now since that pavilion is gonna be an open air pavilion, why can't we just have some picnic tables in there?
I think it's contrary to the mission statement.
It really isn't. That's total bop kiss.
No, that's not part of their, their master plan document.
No, I mean, they cling to this concept of passive park as if it means completely inactive. Right, but that is not the definition of a passive park. And in, quote.
One way or the other, I'll put them in.
Neither do I, but quote, "It usually involves a low level of development such as rustic picnic areas, benches and trails." Picnic benches.
Is a place on the grass, but that's semantics. I really don't care.
Well, I, I just think, you know, people would use them and I, if people are sitting, you know, idling their cars, eating their lunch, I've seen it a lot when I'm down there during the day. And I just feel like, you know, if you had a picnic table, maybe people would shut their car off and go sit out on the picnic table and have lunch.
Or they're trashing the pavilion instead outside of it.
Well, hopefully in the garbage can.
Ah, they're frickin' slobs. It's been terrible lately.
Really?
Oh, God, it's disgusting.
People are pigs.
There's trash all over the place down there.
Is that, is that where, Ben, where you got the photo of the gloves?
Oh, yeah, masking gloves on the, on our nature play area where my daughter was playing. Yeah, it was great. Yeah, we'll get them in a.
Is anybody not like that idea or doesn't, thinks that's a bad idea? Feel free to say. I'm just kind of thinking we should have them, but.
No, I think you should encourage people to get out and do stuff.
Yes, I mean, they, people shouldn't really be sitting there with their cars idling anyway. It's against village code, but.
I, I know it is, but I mean, you know, and it may not do away with that. People may still do it because they have the air conditioner running, but.
Right.
I, I just feel like especially now, anything that we can do to make outdoor parks more desirable, maybe is a good word. I don't, just, I think it's a good thing.
Easy to use.
Yeah.
By the way, shall I assume, shall I assume everyone there has seen people walking dogs through the park? Because a great number of them do it.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, somebody asked on the Glen Park website or Facebook page, could they bring their puppy? And I said, no, it's against the code, but you're welcome to in our other parks.
Well, it's, yeah, I don't know. How do you?
No, I do, I do like, I, if you want to put, place to sit in there and have a bite to eat, I think it's a good idea, actually. If people are slobs, they're slobs. I mean, I don't know how to control that. You can put five garbage cans right in front of them and they'll still ignore them.
Pigs are gonna be pigs.
Put them in its building.
Okay, well, I've got nothing else. Anyone, I know Chip, you had touched on the open meetings, executive order update. Do you want to talk about that a little more?
No, I mean, no, I think we covered it. It's just, we just have to wait.
Wait and see.
What, if anything, the governor does.
Okay.
It's just, you know, it's difficult, it makes it difficult because we are already trying to schedule hearings and it's gonna be a pain in the butt if we have to change the notice because something changes.
Yep. Hey Judy, do you have anything else?
No, I already said, you know, about the parking lot and something, whatever, the taxes, that's all I had. The yoga, we talked about that.
Yeah.
So that's all I had.
Okay.
Okay, I did get an email from Tricia today at the Eagle House too, that I forgot to mention. Basically, they were just looking for us to be as timely and responsive as we possibly can when the governor allows them to start doing outdoor dining and patio seating. And we may, they may be asking to get creative with using parking lot areas if they have them to help, you know, with setting up tables for them to be able to social distance further. And my reply to her was that, you know, we're just, we're gonna follow everything that Governor Cuomo guidelines as they come down to us. But, you know, we'll be willing to help them and expedite things as, as we are able to. And I also copied Tim Masters on it because he'll be the one ultimately who will be in charge of the enforcement of all of that.
Is there a, is there a outdoor seating permit fee?
There is. I believe there is.
Yep.
Should we consider waiving that?
Some have already paid for it. Quite a few have paid for it.
Never mind.
I mean, it's not about ideas.
Unless you want to refund everybody.
Well, we could do that too. I mean, I guess, I guess we could, I mean, I, like, for instance, I mean, you know, Eagle House, for instance, they have their little outdoor patio there, but it's not the same as like Sorrentino's where they're pushing out into the parking lot.
Right.
You know, so like if, if you have.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Matt.
I was just gonna say, I mean, if it's, if this is for those in, those facilities that don't typically have outdoor seating like this, that are being forced to do it specifically because of this condition, you know, we could waive those fees, you know, based, if they just write, they could write a letter.
And, but I think you may end up getting requests from people who maybe, from, from both types of businesses, ones that already have a patio but need, or want more space than they currently have on their patio because they, because they need to spread people out.
Yeah.
And places that don't currently have one boat, but are gonna want it so that they can open. Yeah, this, this could really, I mean, I could imagine that you'll, that there might, we're gonna have to think about that a little bit, but I would think there might be a high demand for those permits and we may need to consider whether you want to temporarily suspend some of the, I mean, it's not the simplest process in the world. I mean, it's.
Perfections.
Yeah, and, and you know, it's basically, you guys to go to planning board and get approval and, and there needs to be a barrier if it's.
It's gonna be the big one.
Somewhere where there could be.
Vehicles.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you look at the Eagle House, you know, and I've even thought about it, but if you look at all their spots, they, they can't even get that many people on their deck. They could probably hold two or three maybe up there.
Yeah.
If you distance those tables. So that means they need three parking spots. So I guess they're wanting to know the option. Can they give up the, you know, the upper portion of their parking lot to put more tables down there so that at least they can run a business and have people sit down? So I think we should, you know, obviously within keeping safety in mind, you know, the ballards or whatever we need to do or they need to do. But as far as streamlining the process, if we can legally, I think we should try to at least do that.
Well, I mean, short of amending, and that's the thing, because we do have those existing regulations, we really, I think, the only way we could streamline those or modify those without amending the zoning code would be through a, an executive or, you know, a mayoral executive order, modifying or suspending some or all of those provisions. And then I guess there's a question of whether even that executive order would have to be approved by the Department of Health. So there's a lot to think about, I think, for that. Now that you mentioned it.
I think I would definitely, you know, want to, I mean, I get that they're, you know, anxious to get open and get as many people, you know, onto, you know, into their business as they can, but at the same time, you know, I gotta defer, I mean, we can't, you know, people are, they're still gonna need barriers of sorts. They're gonna need to, you know, have cars parked so far away from where those barriers are. There's, there's certain safety guidelines that I'm not even aware of that, you know, I would have to sit down, talk to Tony and Tim about and see what their thoughts are on it.
Yeah.
Is this a fee that gets looked at during reorg?
Yeah, we, we charge $200.
What if during reorg, you, the board decides to move the fee to $15, you know?
Well, no, well, no, because then next year, people are gonna apply in droves for the following year and we won't have gotten through reorg. It's better to, you know, at this point, it would be better to, you know, suspend that by executive order and then it can be on a limited basis. Yeah, I mean.
Well, fair we've taken here since January, we've taken it.
I was gonna say, am I the only one that's not getting that?
We're all listening.
You said, but all we heard was since, since January.
Oh, Panera. Cold Jake LLC. I'm not, I think that's Cher.
Okay.
Sorrentino's. Fresh Catch. My Sweet Jenny's. And 5429 Main. It's Kathleen Kinnon. I'm not sure which business that is.
Is that, isn't that the wine place on North Ellicott?
No, it would be, it would be further.
54 is down, down around California somewhere.
Yeah, unless it's. Please or Spa. It would be this side of the street, so.
Those all paid for the outdoor seating already? Yes. Yeah, I mean, I don't think, I, I don't think we can, you know, the, I mean, we do have costs associated with outdoor seating. Tony and Tim or both of them need to go over and inspect and so we need to make sure we're covering our costs.
Yeah, I mean.
I know they've been through a lot, so if somebody, my opinion is, is if somebody asks, then have them bring it to the board, tell Tim that if somebody's really struggling.
Ten to 10.
You know, it's worth a conversation, is all I'm saying.
Okay, all right. Well, I don't want to, I don't want to take up any more time tonight because I, you know, the email I received and as we go along, if anything new comes out, I'll copy the board and/or we'll discuss it more at our next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I think for anybody, is maybe go ahead and have Tim start looking with Department of Health. And Chip, are you gonna look in that as well or should we have Tim and Judy kind of research what it would be if we try to change our current situation?
Well, if they want to take a look at that, that's fine. If they want to consult with me, I mean, either way.
So I.
The more you can do in-house, obviously, the cheaper it is for you.
So Brian was copied on that email as well and he forwarded it to AJ Baines at the Chamber. And so I was kind of, I, I mean, I think there are a couple other people who were included who are kind of looking into it. So I think I was just gonna, you know, kind of piggyback on. So I think I was just gonna, you know, kinda piggyback on what the town and what their, you know, what they were gonna be able to do for their restaurants and businesses. And then I thought we could just modify that based on the village.
Well, can I, okay, so maybe, I'm just scanning through what the outdoor seating requirements are here and everything, and they're, they're reasonably prescriptive.
They're very prescriptive.
But as, but as Chip points out, they do ultimately find their way in front of the Planning and Architectural Review Board. And maybe, maybe instead of waiving the permit fee, as you say, we do have, we do have, you know, costs associated with it, you know, would be better to, you know, write an executive order that says, you know, as long as the, you know, directing the building department, that as long as they are compliant with the prescriptive, you know, requirements of the code, we're, we'll waive, you know, the planning board review regarding village character and all the other things that are in there because this is a, you know, temporary, you know, pandemic-related thing. That way, at least, it puts it squarely in the building department, permit review, go out and see that it's installed right, keep it moving. We don't have to schedule multiple public hearings, all this crap.
So maybe, maybe we go ahead and, maybe this is for Keaton to push this out to those that are already expressing interest. Like, cause I don't know that Eagle House has to do that. So maybe send her a copy of what is gonna be expected of her, like the ballards or the bear, you know, some type of safety barricade or something, whatever the requirement is. I know they have to have them, there's their requirement.
It says, it says that the seasonal outdoor seating must be either separated from any public or private area used for parking or movement of automobiles by a buffer of at least 10 feet in width, or an appropriate DOT-approved anti-ram vehicle barrier, or located on an elevated platform constructed of concrete, wood, or other sturdy material at least six inches in height and equipped with an appropriate barrier. So, you know, if they're gonna chew up, if they're gonna chew up four parking spaces behind their building, if they chew up six, and they say parking stops here, and there's two, you know, dead zone parking spaces, and then the four next to the building are what they're using, they're 10 feet, they're good.
I'm good with that. I think that's a good idea.
That makes sense.
But I want them to go ahead and start thinking about it, because that way they're not last minute trying to get the requirements together. Like, here's the requirements, you don't normally do this, so this is what you, you're still gonna have to do. We're gonna work on the rest of the process on our, right?
I think that's a great idea.
Keaton, you're gonna put that word out? Yeah. Would you like to actually have a resolution on waiving the process from planning and zoning? And if you do that on June 8th, that would make it a lot.
We can't, we can't do it by resolution. It's gonna, the only way it can be done, to waive otherwise applicable provisions of the code is, is through an executive order under this public health emergency. Amen. Well, right, yeah, the mayor can do that, but it's not a resolution. But, as I said earlier, I, I'm not sure, you know, that might have to be reviewed and approved by the Department of Health. Now, that may be a purely, you know, perfunctory process, because they're not gonna be wanting to be bothered with that presumably, but
Well, I mean, so like.
There's.
Do the executive orders expire with the state of emergency?
Has to be given to how we can effectively. Yeah, so that's the other issue that, you know, it's only, yeah.
Well, they, I mean, is the, is the governor gonna be, we're sending the state of emergency? I mean, they, they can't do that. I mean, we got, we got four phases of reopening. Yeah, I mean, that are gonna take months. So for the foreseeable future, we're still in a state of emergency at the state level through the end of the summer. And, and with regards to the Health Department and stuff, I mean, what I'm suggesting our executive order should be is to basically cut out some of the red tape. I mean, you know, we've got, we've got, we could, we could actually specifically delineate which clauses are being exempted. Like, you know, 11216J4C, which talks about the quality of the materials, workmanship and construction of the tables, chairs, and umbrellas, you know? We don't need to deal with.
Right. I understand that, but there was a, a, a exec, you know, one of the executive orders was after he, you know, the, the governor really pretty seriously circumscribed the ability of local government chief executives to issue executive orders that, that presumably they were concerned about might conflict with something he was gonna do. So there's generally a requirement, a prohibition on executive orders regulate, I mean, it's, it's a different, because you only have the executive order because of the state of emergency. But on the other hand, they say, but if you're going to try to regulate these issues, that are the very reason why there is a state of emergency, then the Department of Health has to review and approve these executive orders. But, you know, so anyway, all of that is, it's, we'll have to figure out exactly how we need to do that.
I think this was good, a good discussion, and I'm glad I remembered this. Sorry, it was at the end of the meeting, but so, okay, and then I think Ben is last on for purchase financing of the High Lift.
Yes, we're looking to purchase a new High Lift. Our current device, our current unit is over eight years old. We're starting to see some significant costs associated with it, not the least of which will be tires forthcoming here to the tune of about $8,000 for a new set of shoes for that machine. Like to incorporate that into a bond resolution that will also pay for the paving that we had our bid opening last week. It's on state bid. It is under warranty for three years for service. And I'd like to get that, then, you know, we're going with all of the other equipment that we're trying to turn around and get rid of it in under five years. So we can see savings of cost over the long run. It's a big ticket, about, what was it, $119?
This is the front-end loader, right?
We can still get about $50,000 out of it.
Then we only, we only need to finance the other 65.
No, 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 that includes.
No, that's after.
Yeah, that includes the, the cost, the, the trading cost. Do you have that sheet there, Judy?
I don't. Have it in front of me.
And on my phone, so you gotta help me to press share something here.
I'm not, you know what, I can pull it up on my phone, because I don't, actually, I can probably send it to Keaton. But here's the thing, with the bonding.
That's the next point. Chip, what do you know about?
Yeah.
What about, what about it?
Are we able to bond under the current executive order? Judy got some conflicting information from our bonding attorneys. I was talking to Ed Schiller yesterday, and he said that the town of Lancaster just authorized a bond.
I've never, I have not heard that you can't bond during this. I don't know why that would be, but I would defer to your bond counsel. If that's what your bond counsel's telling you, I would be curious to know what. I, I'm not aware of that. I have not heard that municipalities can't bond during this.
What he told me is the current executive orders officially, effectively prevent the adoption of a bond resolution subject to permissive referendum.
Well, that, you know, that may be, I suppose, if you can't hold the referendum. I guess that's a good point. Right, so if there is, if there is, you know, if, if there is a permissive referendum and you can't hold it, presumably that would be a problem. Now, I guess you can say, well, what if, you know, usually nobody, the permissive referendum is not triggered. So why can't you pass the resolution? And as long as there's no petition for a referendum that it was effective, but I don't know. That is really, you know, that's really a question for your bond counsel.
Because it's for more than five years, it would have a permissive referendum, what I was told.
Right, but a permissive referendum only, that just means if somebody files a petition for a referendum within 30 days, then there's a referendum. It's not a mandatory referendum. It's a permissive referendum. So but, as I said, this is, I mean, if you want, I can talk to, who, who told you that? Bond counsel or? You know, I mean, that's his job. He, he should know.
So, the next part of that is if, if we do run into an issue where we can't go forward with the bonding, we would potentially finance the purchase of this machine, like we've done in the past, using the capital line and to the effect of over five years, whatever that comes to, 25,000 or less, and if there's an issue with that.
Well, do, would, I mean, do we need it?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, well, yeah, if we need it, we don't have a choice. If we can't bond it, we're gonna finance it.
Okay, as long as the board is okay with that. And I, I feel that looking ahead at our capital improvement plan, that's not gonna hamstring us in any way. We've been living with a $27,000 a year takeout from the, for the 903 truck. I'm operating with the same funds essentially.
Okay, yeah. Well, is anybody on the board opposed to that? If we can't do the bond, we'll finance it? Is, is that okay?
Yeah, I mean, especially if we can get decent financing, as you would think right now.
To in this climate.
Well, we would just finance it for ourselves.
Ourselves.
General fund, basically.
Oh, okay, right, right, okay.
And then, and then annually, I think we put in, what, 65,000, Ben, to capital reserve?
Yep, 65 annually.
Of that, 65 roughly, 23 would go to pay off the first year of, pay back the first year of that loan. And then 45, whatever it is, 47 would go into capital reserve. And we would do that for the next five years. Matt, I saw your comment about contingency.
I'm, I'm staying out of that one.
We don't have that much in contingency.
That's why we're trying to do it this way. And then, I mean, that, so that, that gets one major element out of the way, just that then trying to find out if we can pay for paving here before snow for once this, this time.
All right, sounds good.
We got, we got.
The governor will release that, because he's trying to push for constructions.
Well, that's just, that's, that's what's kinda maddening about the whole thing. Whatever.
All right, do you have anything else, Ben, or?
No, just, I'm gonna continue then, status quo with their crews. And, you know, you'll, you may have to suffer some complaints from people, but.
Well, you know, it's, it is, it is what it is, and we're doing the best we can under the circumstances, so.
Yeah, the banners came in. They'll be going up the week of June 1st in there somewhere.
So Keaton, I wanna maybe talk to you about doing a press release on those. And the story behind them. So Ben, can you, you went and put them up before June 1st, would you?
Uh, that's not gonna happen this week, honestly.
No, like, what, like, what date would you put them up, do you think, like, June 5th?
Yeah, I mean, somewhere between Monday and Friday. I'm gonna shoot to, to get a crew in to do that. So, probably, I'm just trying to think which, my 18, wait, where is it this week there? Tuesday, Thursday? Yeah, it'll either be Monday or Wednesday.
Okay. All right.
Barring any unforeseen calamities.
Okay, that's great.
We'll keep in touch then, Ben, and we know what you're thinking.
Trust me, you'll know when they're up. You'll see.
Yeah, I just, I'd rather get the word out around the same time.
Yeah, Keaton wanted to, uh, they're, they're colorful. I'm just gonna laugh. I get no comment. We need a little color in this village.
Oh, don't we ever?
Yeah, we do. So I'll take that.
They're gonna pop, I'll tell you that much.
Nice designs.
Um, okay, so Keaton, do you have anything else to update us on your last year?
Yeah, actually, I just, I'd hate to go back to it, but when we were talking before about emergency order and I guess what's the best course of action for us to go right now? I mean, should we kinda see what Jim Zamanik has to say and how we might be able to add that into our executive order as far as the seating?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm really, I mean, the village is in the town of Amherst, and I was, as we've been kind of all along, I've been kinda looking to them for some guidance and help, because they do have the Emergency Operations Center. And that's been a really good, useful resource for us here, you know? So I am going to just kind of see and wait and kind of learn from them, and we'll kind of work within our parameters here in the village and move forward.
I've been thinking about, you know, basically, if we get to the point, maybe we write it for that one meeting for the, our public hearing. As you have to, maybe we mark off and create a line at it at the back door with tape. And space them out six feet. You come up to the podium and say your piece, go out that side door that we normally lock, and send them out the front door, because you gotta create it one way. You gotta come in, do your thing, and head out the front. And they're gonna have to walk back around the building.
The, the only issue with that, Al, is that a lot of times people wanna say their piece, but then they also kinda wanna stick around because they wanna hear the, you know, the atmosphere of the room and hear what everyone else is saying. So, I mean, if there's maybe a way that we could capture that, that would be ideal. You know, because I, you know, that's just, that's just always what I've observed when we've had public hearings. People generally wait and they wanna hear what everyone else is saying, and then when they're done, everybody gets out of their seats and leaves, right? So, that's, I don't know, maybe we can, maybe Keaton, we could figure something out so people could hear maybe outside, like some speaker or audio or, you know, something.
Yeah, I'm sure there's something I could have.
Could we tap off our speakers there, Keaton? Put one in the window, open a window, maybe, put one of those.
Actually, what, what would work better is if, if my computer is recording what's inside, the Bluetooth speaker could be outside, and it would still get the range. So people would be able to hear what's going on outside. I guess that's one way to do it. They could still hear what's going on. We could always, through Zoom, put it on YouTube Live and have a TV outside if it's not raining. And that way, it would also broadcast through Zoom and YouTube Live. People would be able to see and hear. So there's several ways to do it. It's just, you know, I, I'd hate to do all that if it's, if it's raining. I'd hate to not be prepared, though, you know.
Fire department, open up their bays.
That's a possibility. That one bay closest to us.
Pull the trucks out. It's our building. It's our building, by the way.
So, all right, yeah, we'll, we'll kind of take that as it comes, maybe by the end of the week, early next week, we'll have answers.
Yeah. Well, and I think too, I think, you know, if, if it's, I mean, we can also say if, if we can't fit everybody in one night, we can hold this open and give other nights for people to come again. Can we not?
Chip, is that?
Well, we're still going to have, I think, the same issue, whether, I, I don't know, I just think, you know, I think people want to hear everyone else's comments and collectively and.
Right.
I don't know, let's give it some thought, and, you know, let's just wait and see, we'll probably know more by Friday of where all of this is heading. And we have our next meeting scheduled for June 8th. So I think between now and then, hopefully sooner than later, we'll have more guidance and we'll go from there.
I'm an hour south of Albany, so I could pop by and, you know, talk with Andy on my way home if you want to, give him the call.
You know what, let me, let me call him right now, and, yeah, I'll tell him, you'll be there in what, like 45 minutes, maybe?
No, I'm not going tonight, we're talking tomorrow, but I'll stop by on my way home.
Why don't you just grab a coffee with him in the morning?
Yeah, probably will.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, anyone have anything else? It's late.
If you want to, did you want to see, has he had questions?
Oh, yes, Izzy, that's right, yep.
Um, I pretty much, so for, this is about the parks, picture our parks story. It's going to have a separate story next week in addition to the normal Village Board one. And I pretty much have everything I need from the presentation, last week's presentation. But I was wondering, I know a lot of like residents during the public commentary sections have been talking about cutting costs and how the budget was settled before the pandemic. So does anyone, especially Mayor Rogers and Trustee E2, want to talk to the value of having parks and the value of investing all this money in the parks, especially since it's an increase?
Matt, you want to go first, or do you want me to?
Sure, sure, yeah. I think it's, you know, figure out how to say this. It, it's an interesting problem that we have this year in that we simultaneously have this irregular sort of economic situation going on. And we're also, you know, dealing with budget shortfalls and whatnot. And, you know, we balanced this situation by saying, look at, you know, there are things that have to be done. And this budget situation, it is what it is, whether we increase, you know, spending or not. So now, more than ever, this pandemic situation has made free, public, outdoor spaces desirable to more people on any given day than have potentially ever used them before. I mean, you drive around to any park, hiking facility, nature area, you name it, the parking lots are full on any given weekend when traditionally they're underutilized. We have parks that, you know, per square mile, we have more parks in our little village than most towns have throughout. And they need the care and attention to make them the premium parks that they need to be. But they also need to have the facilities for people to use and enjoy safely. And, you know, now more than ever, it, it has to be a desirable place to go. And so, you know, the playgrounds at, the playground remodel at South, at Island Park
Even more.
Is paramount by comparison to our wooden structure that we have there now. It, it will be a showpiece of a playground for the center of the village, arguably downtown Amherst as well. Eventually, as these things come online and, and the, the picture our parks really becomes, you know, rationalized across the village, particularly with South Long, I think you'll see a revitalization of neighborhoods as a result. And, you know, we're, we're looking at big-ticket things that will have long sweeping repercussions for the benefits of the village and the town of Amherst, much longer than the investment time that we've put into this. So there's no question that, that parks are an invaluable resource to everyone today, but they'll remain so if they're cared for and appropriately invested in for tomorrow.
Awesome, thank you.
So Izzy, I will just add to that, and, and first, I think, one of the most important things I hope that you do include in the article is a big thank you to Trustee E2 and the Parks Committee. I know that the Parks Committee's been around for a long time, but I feel ever since Trustee E2 took it over, I, I've just never seen so much progress and direction in the right direction, if you will. So I really, I think that under his leadership, I think that, you know, it's really, the parks are going to blossom. And so, thank you, Matt. And then I think just for a personal note, I think that I've always used the parks, I've lived here for 16 years. And I think that the parks were, my kids certainly enjoyed them, and they still enjoy them. But I think that stronger parks make for better, stronger communities. And as Trustee E2 said, you know, now more than ever, people are out and they're looking for that free public space, a space to get out and to exercise and to spend time with their families. And I think that now more than ever, you know, it just shows that these parks are so important to so many people. And, you know, we're going to make them the best that they can be.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anyone else want to say anything about the parks?
I think, you know, I, I'll, I'll say from my vantage point, even South Long Park has been really busy, and I see a lot more people walking and using the park now. So I think that hopefully this encourages people actually do more stuff outside, get out and get moving. I think it's good for our, our mental health, our physical well-being. So, yeah, we, we definitely needed to invest in our parks. So it is a scary thought, you know, to think we may not have the funds to do what we really want to do this year. But we're going to certainly try, so.
Awesome, thank you, that's all I had.
All right, thanks, Izzy.
Thanks, everyone.
All right, does anyone have anything else before we wrap up?
Can I go home now?
Yeah. Can I, can I go home now? So, all right, well, before we leave, I just want to thank everyone for, you know, working remotely and a lot more emailing and just kind of getting through all of this and, and bringing things back online that we, we just dropped on, you know, in March, and here we are at the end of May. So, so I know I stumbled a little bit with that historic stuff. I, I needed to just refresh my memory because it seems like ages ago that we were discussing that originally. But it'll be good to be back up and running. So that's it. Stay safe. All right, thanks.
Good night.
Stay well.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Keaton.
Yep.
You're welcome.
Bye, guys.